What's up y'all? Gonna do some more problems. I think I might just do a few homework problems unless people join up. And then I'm gonna just do calculus. I've been really behind on my studies. Uh, so I'd like to do some of that and catch up. Okay. So this one says a TV dinner company sells three types of dinners. A chicken dinner for ten dollars. Okay. A beef dinner for eleven dollars or a fish dinner for twelve dollars. At one particular grocery store, they sold two hundred dinners for a grand total of two thousand one hundred thirty-eight dollars. If they sold three times as many chicken dinners as they did fish, then how many of each kind of dinner did they sell? Show your work. Okay. We always have to show our work, right? So the big mistake with these kind of problems is trying to just understand everything at once and hold it all in your head. Uh, the easiest thing I find to do is just get it all down, get it on paper. Now, each one of these sentences doesn't necessarily have to uh directly go to one like mathematical expression. In fact, the information is broken up into two different sentences. And each of those two sentences gives you enough information, they can do half of the statement. So uh, the thing that I take from this is I understand what we do not know is how many chicken dinners, how many beef dinners, or how many fish dinners are sold at this particular grocery store that we're talking about. So I'm gonna make three variables. I'm gonna say let C equal the number of chicken dinners. B equal the number of beef dinners. Not right dinners. And F equal the number of fish. Now, I'm writing number of fish because that's the thing I don't know. I know how much it costs. Okay, so I, I don't know how many we sold. Um, so maybe I'll say sold. Um, okay, so it's important that I do this. The reason why is not so that, you know, you can get credit or anything like that. It's so that when I try to interpret my answer. Oh, actually, I'm writing without this on the screen. Okay, well, it's on the screen now. I didn't let it go too long. Um, when I interpret my answer, I'm going to be able to look back and say, okay, what did this mean? Uh, and I, and I won't have to hold it all in my memory since my memory is not good enough for that. So let's look at the next statement. Or actually, we know the price of each um, each dish, okay? And we also know that this particular grocery store sold two hundred. So they sold two hundred dinners. These are all the dinners that they sell. Three types of dinners. And these are the three types here, and they sold two hundred of them. So I know that the number of chicken dinners plus the number of beef dinners plus the number of fish dinners equals the total. It equals uh, two hundred dinners. Okay? Now, if we multiply each dinner times its cost, we should get the total um, sales. So if we do ten dollars times C plus eleven dollars times B plus twelve dollars times F, this should be equal to two thousand one hundred thirty-eight dollars. Let's think about that. If you sell some number of chicken dinners at ten dollars apiece, this term will express how much uh, they contribute from the chicken, the sales of chicken to the total sales. And we can make the same argument for beef and, and fish dinners. Okay, so that's two, two expressions and two equations, and we've got three unknowns. So we still don't have enough to solve it. But this last uh, bit here says, if they sold three times as many chickens, uh, at three times as many chicken dinners as they did fish. So the number of chicken dinners is equal to three times as much as the fish. That's all we need. That should be enough, I think, to solve this. So we can use a substitution here. So let's use this and we are gonna substitute in for C here. All right, actually, you know, do we want to substitute in for C? Yeah, let's sub, let's substitute in for C here and also for here. So I'm gonna, that's gonna give me these expressions. So I'm gonna say three F, that's where I had C. I'll put parentheses around it so you can see it. Okay, um, plus B plus F equals two hundred. Now, I can go and I can do uh, ten times three F. Okay, that's where I'm substituting in the second equation. Plus eleven B plus twelve F equals two thousand one hundred thirty-eight. All right. We have some like terms. We can uh, combine the Fs together. So if I combine those like terms, that's gonna give me this um, these are systems I should have put in squiggly brackets here. That's gonna make it B plus four F for the first equation equal to two hundred. And then thirty B, I'm sorry. This is thirty F plus twelve F gives us forty-two F. And then we keep our eleven B there, eleven B. All right, this is equal to two thousand one hundred thirty-eight. Now, from this, we just use our, our, whatever methods you know to solve systems of equations. Um, what do I wanna use here? I'm gonna do another substitution. I, this one looks really easy to solve for B. So this, this one will give me B equals two hundred minus four F. And I can, I can use a substitution for this right into here. Oh, that's a plus in between there, sorry. Okay, so I'm gonna substitute this for B in this expression right there. That's gonna give me eleven times B, this is equal to B. Two hundred minus four F plus forty-two F equal to two thousand one hundred thirty-eight. With this, I can go ahead and I can find um, I can go ahead and find F. See, we just have one unknown in this expression, so I can solve for that. So this is gonna be two thousand two hundred, just distributing the eleven. Um, minus forty-four F plus forty-two F equals, oh, I don't like that. Nope. I generated a bad solution here. So I'm gonna get a negative F, which means we got returns on the, the chicken. Um, so we're gonna use a different method. And this can happen when you generate solutions that don't make sense. Okay, we do need, let's make the substitution the other direction. So let me rewrite this statement here. This is gonna be C plus BF, C plus B plus F equals two hundred. And then ten C plus eleven B plus twelve F equals two one three eight. Okay. And then we have that last one. Let me just make sure I said that right. If they sold three times as many chickens, so chickens is three times the fish. Uh, how many of each kind did they sell? Okay, so let's take, let's take this and move it over here. Then I'll write that other uh, that other statement back, that chicken equals three F. So I'm gonna solve this for fish this time. So fish equals uh, C over three, and we'll make this substitution in. Okay. So this is our system. So let's make this substitution in for F here and here. And see if this turns up something a little easier. So we're gonna get C plus B plus C over three. Um, that's going in for F equals two hundred. And then ten C plus eleven B plus twelve times C over three equal to twenty-one thirty-eight. And we can combine like terms. I'll bring it up here. Um, so we're gonna get C plus C over three is four, C over three plus B equal to two hundred. And then our second sentence, our second statement, we're gonna get, um, this is gonna cancel to a four. And so ten C plus four C gives us fourteen C plus eleven B equals two one three eight. All right. Um, I'll multiply the first set, uh, the first equation by three. Four C plus three B equals six hundred. And then copy down the second. Okay. And so our least common multiple here is twenty-eight. So we'll multiply this one by seven. Multiply this one times two. Um, that's the whole, I'm gonna do the whole equation. And let me just, I guess I can finish writing a little bit more down here. Um, so we're gonna get twenty-eight C plus twenty-one B. Thousand two hundred. And then twenty-eight C plus twenty-two B. Okay, that worked out nicely. Equals, just times two, so this is six, one, seven, two, four, check that. Let's work it. Two times two one three, yeah, four two seven six, okay. Um, and then so from here, I'll just go ahead and I'll subtract the, the, I'll do, I'm gonna write this in matrix notation. I'm gonna take the second row minus the first row and see what that gives me. I think that'll give us a solution for B. Okay, so twenty-eight minus twenty-eight is zero, and then twenty-two minus twenty-one is B. And four thousand two hundred seventy-six minus four thousand two hundred is seventy-six. So B equals seventy-six, okay. Now, with that knowledge, we can go back to our original system of equations that we wrote. And we can generate the rest of them. Um, so let's use this one uh, with our sub den F. And we can find C. So uh, C plus B plus C over three, that's our substitution, equals two hundred. So four thirds C plus B equals two hundred. Now, we can substitute in B, and that'll give us four thirds C plus seventy-six equals two hundred. Now, uh, we're gonna subtract seventy-six from both sides, and we'll get one twenty-four. Uh, so fourth, I'm gonna write it up here. Four thirds C, I'm sorry, this is going all over the place. Four thirds C equals one twenty-four, we multiply it by three, divide by four. Oops, not one forty-four, one twenty-four over four. And then so we've got a two and a sixty-two, and then a thirty-one. So this is C equal to ninety-three. So we've got, I'll collect these over here. B equals ninety-three, C equals seventy-six. And then lastly, let's solve for F. We should be able to get F from C. Um, so C equals three F. And so actually, we can just use this, this version here, that F equals C over three. So F equals C over three, but C is equal to ninety-three, that's what we just found. And we know, cause we multiplied that by three to get this, that it's thirty-one. Okay, so the first time we, we solved this, we generated, this, this system could have generated two solutions, it looks like, and that's weird to me, but unless I made a mistake the first time. But this has happened to me in these application problems a couple of times, where like I'll generate a solution that doesn't make sense in terms of the um, in terms of the problem statement, like you can't sell, I guess you could return um, fish dinners, but I, I don't think that's what they intended. So if you do that, just make the other substitution that's possible, and then you should be good to go. Oh, I didn't even check to see if anyone had come into the chat. Oh, we got a viewer. Hey, what's up viewer? Uh, there's one concurrent, concurrent viewer, so that, that's probably the uh, original poster here. OP as it were. Okay, hopefully that helped. Um, if it did, please subscribe, like, comment, share. All of those things that will help me um, grow the channel and hopefully a community behind it. And if you have friends who are uh, you know, using, they're taking the same class, they have the same problem, send them the link. You know, tell them when we started. I think this one's right at the beginning. And hopefully that they, they can benefit from it as well. Um, and if you have any questions, post it in the chat. You know, I'll, I'll try to clarify anything that didn't make sense. Okay, I'm gonna shrink this so it doesn't get away in the chat. And continue on, I'll do a few more of these maybe. Vectors. Line passes through the point two five zero and is parallel to the vector three I plus seven J plus K. The point P with coordinates three A B lies on the line. Okay. Find the value of A and B. Okay. So let's do this one. Oh, make sure nobody answered already. Now, yeah, looks like it's been answered. That sucks. I like vectors. Answers entered are incorrect in some way, which of these assumptions are wrong. I need all of the answers. Thank you uh, to be correct in order to get credit for the problem, so I don't know what I got right or what I'm missing. Okay, let's see if we can help. If span of V is equal to the span of U, then V is a scalar multiple of U. If W is a subset of vector space V, which contains the zero vector of V, then W is a subset of V. I don't think that's true. Suppose W, hmm, it's been a while since I've done linear algebra. I don't know if I qualified to give feedback on this. I think that's, that's definitely false. Suppose W, V one, V two, V three are vectors in a vector space. If W is in the span of these others, then W must be a scalar multiple of one of the vectors. No, that's false. Okay, three is false. If Ax equals B is a consistent linear system of M equations and N unknowns, then the solution says a subset of Rn. Hmm, I think that's true. If S is a finite set of vectors in a vector space V, then the set span of S is closed under vector addition in. Oh, I don't know that that's necessarily true. So if S is a finite set of vectors in a vector space, then the set of the span of S is closed under vector addition. Let me think of uh, in scalar multiplication. No, yeah. I don't know how to like tell him how to solve that. You just have to think through it. That's tough. Yeah, so I've never taught linear algebra to anyone, so I don't know if I'm really qualified to comment on that frankly. Greetings, I'm true for my fellow Alex users, Alex users? Am I supposed to type in extra numbers in the bottom picture? Oh, okay. Well, there's not many new things that strike you enough. Seems like I got in trouble there for something. Who knows? Unsolved. This sucks, cause I can't really see what's going on here. Yeah. Is it cropped somehow? Oh, they subtracted, okay. All right, um, sure. This is kind of a crazy question, but all right, so we wanna add image that I just snapped. Okay. All right, so I don't know where this came from, but so you have uh, the log, I guess this is absolute value log of X equal to eight point six three three. Whatever this number is. Let me just do the subtraction. This is ten minus one point three six six five. So eight point six six three five is the thing here. Um, so let me think really quickly. I wanna make sure, so this is the log function, so yours is actually like the absolute value of it. So I know it's the log of the absolute value of log. And I'm gonna check my answer, but I think we're just gonna take, we're gonna raise both sides uh, to a base of E. We're gonna do E to the whatever on both sides. And this, this will cancel out one of these guys, since they're inverse functions. And then let's call this absolute value equals E to the eight point six three three five. And then, so this means that there could be two solutions. This is absolute value, so this is positive. So this could be either negative or positive. And then, so let's just E to this again. Um, cancels it out, so raise this to E, raise this to A. And this is crazy, but it should be X equals E to the eight point six three three five. Um, which is some huge number. I don't even know. So you could leave it in closed form like, I think this is the right answer. Um, I, I honestly, I'm gonna check it. That's crazy. Yeah, so I got an overflow error, which means this is a big, big number. Um, so E to the eight would be huge. Yeah. So let's, yeah, it's, you're gonna get an overflow error. I, I think maybe just leave this, don't even estimate it, just leave this, this closed form. It's a huge number. Um, I'm getting an overflow error because there's too many digits. I think that's right. I don't know. There's gonna be something tricky with the absolute value though. Where you're gonna be able to get like a plus or a minus in part of it. Um, I'm too long in quarantine. Okay, I don't wanna do too many more. I'm just gonna do calculus after this. Yeah, just like post to the thing, man. Um, so this guy Jamodio, like we can't answer your question unless you post it. And a lot of people on these subreddits are like really, really good at explaining things, so. Can you tell me the answers for these questions? Okay, yeah, I can help you. All right. So let's do this one, and then I'll just remember to do that hopefully. Your answer is correct. Your answer is correct. I love that. Um, okay. Oh, I shouldn't laugh. What time is it? Twenty-nine minutes. Okay, so if you guys, if anyone comes in, please post in the chat room, so I know you're here watching, ask questions. Okay. So I'm gonna move this guy up here. And then I'm just gonna erase. Erase all of this. Because it's not really helping me at all. And then I will fill out the chart like so. Okay, so the reason why we make these truth tables is because we don't know if P is true. We don't know if Q is true. So this whole mess right here, these are all the possibilities of combinations of true and false for P and Q, right? There's two things, P and Q. And each one can take on two values, true or false. And so the number of possibilities here are two times two, right? Which is equal to two to the two. So two raised to the number of variables is gonna be. How many possibilities there are in these truth tables, okay? Um, so that's how you know if you generated enough of these. And the way you do it is you do half of them true and then half of them false for the first var- variable. And then you just keep splitting it up by half all the way down. So then there's only two, so we're true, false, true, false after that. Now, here we have P and Q. So we say P is Q and trues to uh P is Q. P is true and Q is true. So if both of them are true, that's what the and operator does, then. P and Q is true. Now here only one is true. So P and Q is false. Here. Only one is true. So it's false. And then here, only none are true, so we have false. Now let's check not Q. Not Q. So. Not Q is gonna have the opposite sign of Q, okay? So let's look and Q is true, so not Q is false. Q is false, so not Q would be not false, which is true. Uh, here we have Q is true, so not Q is not true, which is false. And here Q is false, so not Q is not false, which is true. Okay. So at least we've got those two rules below. Now, what we're gonna do is we're gonna take the P from this row. And the value from this row. Don't negate this again. Here we want P and not Q, okay? We want P and not Q. So this is not Q. We're just gonna take. The value of this table and or the value of this column and the value of this column. And if they're both true, we'll put a true here. If they're not both true, we'll put a false. Here only one is true, so we'll put a false. And so false. Um, here they're both true, so we'll put a true. Here, they're not both true, so we'll put a false. And here, they're not both true, so we'll put a false. Now, um, let's look at S. So S is this statement. Um, I wanna evaluate this. Or this. So either one can be true. So here's this column right there, and that's why we built the table this way. And here is this column right here, right? We built the tables in this way so that we could look at this column and this column and put an or operator in between them and make a very easy comparison. Okay, so true or false. Okay, true. Uh, false or true. Yeah, that's true also. False or false, that's false. And false or false, that's false. Okay. Um, so what do we notice? This is false or false. This is false. Sorry, that looks true. Let me just make this false. And this is false. So what do we notice? Okay? These values carry out or they they take on the same values as um P. Actually, let me, I'm gonna just get rid of these circles so that you can look at it cleanly. Okay, here we are. So when you enter these, this is what you'll enter. Um, these values are the same as P. So this is, this is logically consistent with the statement P. And let's think about that. Either, that's what this says. Either P and Q is true or P and not Q is true. So it doesn't matter if. Q is true or or not Q is true. Because this is the same as if only P is true. Um, and there is a. There is something like, should be like P and uh Q or not Q. But Q or not Q is is like a tautology. This is always true. So this is always true. Uh, which means we just are down to P now. So the for the second part, for part B, it's just P. That's all it is. Um, hopefully, I don't know if you're not here. Uh, let me look and see. No viewer. Okay, well, hopefully you joined and saw and this helped. Um, if it did. Like subscribe, comment, all of those things and um. You know, ask more questions. Go to my subreddit. It's in my post history and you know, you can send them to me. I'll I'll try to do the thing. Uh, question on prime factor factors. Let's try, let's see. So these are actually more interesting than the homework help one. That's not usually the case, I think. Given the number of factors and number of prime factors of a number, can we determine the number of factors and the number of prime? I can't read this. Okay, so they're just saying numbers now. Give given the number, I think this is, given the number of factors and number of prime number, prime factors of a number. Can we determine that any such number exists? For example, if it has four factors and two of them are prime. That doesn't make any sense to me. Uh, I don't know what this guy is talking about or this person, I should say. Oops. See what they say. I'll assume you're just talking about positive factors. So if the total number of factors is T. It has K distinct pri- prime factors, then you'd have to be able to factor T into exactly K numbers. Okay, I don't actually care about this. Oh, I actually didn't get this far in algebra. We didn't get to rings. We talked about this in linear algebra, but I don't think I'm actually, let me move the question anyway. Let R be a local ring. Yeah, I don't even know what local means. And let M be finally generated R module. I can't wait to study this stuff, but can't help. Unfortunately. First three terms in arithmetic sequence are one, X, and negative Y. Okay, I guess I should look to see if they're unsolved. Four, two. Solved, okay. These actually get comments not from the. Yeah. Alright, well. Let's see, I guess, um. For the moment. I will. Stop this, do some calculus unless somebody pops in. Okay, so I have to remember that I should put this to. Open source. Cause I'm gonna use open stacks. So if anybody comes in and has a question, just uh let me know that you're here in the. Chat rooms that I actually answer it. Otherwise, I'm just gonna be doing my homework, my homework. My problems. I don't know what to call it. My self-study. What was I on? I was on chapter four substitution. Chapter five rather. Okay. I had done some of these. Did that. I don't know which of these I did, so let me just. Just do a bunch of them. Substitution with alteration. Integral of Z, root Z squared minus five. Alright, so I'm gonna make U equal to. Z squared minus five and then D U. D Z equals two Z. So we get. D U over two equals the D Z. And then. Um, so maybe I can use this to solve. So this will be U plus five. Uh, let's try that. Let's see if that works. I don't remember doing this one now that I think about it. So this is the square root of U plus five. Times. Of U. D U of two. And then I think we can just distribute this. Get. U squared plus five U. D U. Oh, I already messed up. That's why. I can't take the derivative apparently. Okay. I'll make a real dumb face while I do math apparently. That's hilarious. Alright, y'all. I think I'm out for the night.